Good morning. Sue, can you call roll for us?
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salasweal?
Here.
Councilmember Canfield is absent and Mayor DeWor.
I'm here. Your motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
All support.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Perry, did you want to call a roll?
Sure. Uh, Paul Marion DeWor is absent. Susan Pottler?
Here.
Teresa Munt?
Here.
And Perry Beecham is here. And Craig Canfield is the representative from the city council, so he's absent also. Uh, I would entertain a motion to excuse those two at this present time.
I'll make that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion for the agenda as presented.
All support.
Any changes? Perry, do you guys need any change?
Um, I, is there, I guess when we get down to part comments, opportunity to talk about a couple of the other parts if we have time.
Okay. Motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Citizen comment, ladies and gentlemen, anybody out there? What? Okay.
I just live across the street, so I kind of don't know what's going on.
RFP for the Riverwalk Park property, Michael.
For approximately the past year, I've been working with developers interested in redeveloping a community school property. As part of their proposed project, they initially requested a 263 foot, 263.3 foot by seven foot piece of property along the eastern region of Riverside Park property to facilitate their development. Downtown property development is challenging tasks because of the many issues that are encountered, which many your normal regular greenfield development, you got to have. This is, this is no different than really any other downtown project. I've probably done seven of these projects. And every one of them always has certain issues, nuances to them that come up and have to address. And if you had a regular piece of land, clear development, you normally don't have those issues. So this one is really no different in that aspect. Um, so, but there are some, um, there are some, there are some things that make this request a little bit different. Our city charter requires a vote of the people to sell, transfer, or dispose of any property in any master plan of the city. Currently Riverside Park is in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The requested portion of the property is technically in the plan, however, this is undeveloped property. If a sale were to occur, this portion must be removed from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. If the portion of the property were to be sold, transferred, or disposed of, there is another issue to address. In 2012, the city of Lowell received a Michigan Department of Natural Resources trust fund grant to redevelop the path and the boat launch at Riverside Park. The commission of receiving this grant requires the park remain in perpetuity, or the grant money received must be returned. However, over time, the DNR recognizes situations such as private development approaching park property. The DNR allows a tran- land transfer component whereby the municipality receives new land to use as park property in exchange for the land where the trust fund grant was provided for. In addition, the value and size of the land must be equal to or greater than the land being removed from the affected park. In October, I presented this project to the city council and there was interest. I was directed by them to write an RFP and at some point set a meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission to discuss this, and I followed those directives. The RFP was purposely written prior to a joint meeting so we can review all possibilities coming in and have officially requested information to consider and move forward on this process. This RFP was difficult to develop as the steps provided in the charter must be followed. This parcel of property on its own being, is a nonconforming parcel, can never be sold on its own per the Michigan Land Division Act. The parcel must be adjacent to a contiguous property and add to it. The RFP was ordered in a way to address the city charter and the Land Division Act concerns. In November 2018, the city received one bid from the RFP. The bid was from Unity School Investor LLC, which includes Dr. Jerry Vanser and Todd Schall, who's here this evening. These two individuals approached the city in October regarding this proj- uh, this project. These were the two that were asked to meet. They are proposing to transfer a 48 by 67 parcel of property that they own, or 3,216 square feet of property, to be transferred to the city as park property in return for the 263.2 by seven foot of property at Riverside Park. In October, there was also some discussion about vacating, possibly vacating High Street for the development. That hasn't been formally requested at this time, as it, but, at this time, and wasn't part of the RFP process. Um, at this, but it may be considered at a later date. If the city is interested in moving and forwarding this pro- development in the manner requested, steps of removing it from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and addressing the DNR trust fund grant issues must occur. I'm presenting this project to you to consider and determine any feedback. If there's any changes you'd like to consider, now would be appropriate time to do that. So, um, in your packet also, I did give you, uh, some of the Clark version of it. Explain the, actually there is, go down to the ninth page of the packet. If there's a, the area in yellow is the area that, that would be vacate, requested to be vacated. The area in blue would be provided to the city.
So that's the land swap, basically?
Basically, no, ninth page, last page. Wait for it. If you can, it's in the packet too. It's on the, on the line, on the website, if you want to pull packet on the website. Go to parcel fund, go to parcel.
You got it, or do you want to plug in mine?
I got it.
There you go.
If you have any questions about development, sure Todd will have the answer for you.
Do the colors get moved? What's being moved and what's being?
Yeah, the, the area in yellow would be what we would vacate. The area in blue would be what they would transfer.
Is there any other particular parcel of land that could go in a swap, that's a swap, besides just that? Blue, anything on the other side of High Street? Be considered? Did they talk about a development over in the, be the, the side between the library and the, and High Street? Was there talk about, with them developing that in that, in their meeting?
Todd, do you want to answer any questions regarding that, or?
Yeah, we'd probably like to develop that at a later date, so.
What is that, the property, the High Street property?
Actually, they own both parcels of property, so. Sure. They own everything, see where the yellow line is? Everything to the east, that whole square. Then if you, can you scroll down a little bit? You see that?
A parcel.
That parcel property looks like Oklahoma? They own that parcel swap.
Oh yeah, parcel two?
Yes.
And then the space between those two parcels?
That is a va- that is a vacated street plan.
And will that be used for parking, or will that be used for?
There is a parking easement on it now, um, in that area.
Is he managing that space? Or will it be, who will be managing it?
As of right now, it's, I believe there, the, this, this small corner of park property on parcel two, there is an easement, and I do believe the city contains that. The, the middle area is, it's, it was supposed to be a street, never became a street, so that's technically owned by the city.
Okay, so the street right there. That street right there is, the street is public, the city.
Correct.
And just the space that says High Street, that rectangle.
Correct.
And didn't you say that parking for the condos would be on the square that they own? It'll be within that space, and that will be planning or expecting their people to be parking lots on the street? They will be accounting for, fully accounting for parking for the people who are residents of that space?
Todd can answer that question probably better.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
So, um, for the residents, they will be only living in those condominiums where they're located there? Um, will you be providing added parking in that building area for some service space?
Be garages, uh, east of where the bus garage building is now.
I'm sorry, what was that?
There will be garages and parking east of where the bus garage building is now.
And where is that?
Building that's parallel to the river.
That's the.
Okay, so yes, with that space, yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, yeah, the short answer is yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
So you're, my understanding is you're asking for basically seven feet. You own five feet from the building, you're asking for additional seven feet so that you can put, um, patios, terraces, whatever, in that area. All right, um, so will that property then go, so will those terraces go right to the property line? Will there be, I mean, I'm just, uh, will there be, um?
Landscaping?
Landscaping, will there be, uh, uh, some kind of, um, boundary between your property and the city property? Or are we building up to the seven feet? And then i- is it going to be up to the city to, you know, to have some kind of, um, boundaries like? That would, that would kind of define the area of what is part of the condominiums and what is part of the park?
Uh, the city won't pick up any more responsibility, so the city will have no responsibility associated with this. What we envision is 10 feet of patio, two feet of landscape strip where you have rose bushes and that type of thing in it. And then the city grass, the park grass.
Okay.
So, without this seven feet, it's too tight for us to do anything like that. And with the seven feet, we can really make it nice, so that's, that's the request.
I mean, I, I'm personally, I'm not opposed, and I've said this before in our meetings, I'm not opposed to the, to the, um, seven feet. Um, but the property that, that you're talking in trade, um, I'm not crazy about that property. Um, one is because you have, the one is, you have, uh, uh, buried power lines over in the other. What I would like to see, and I'm just throwing it out there, I'd like to see it in an exchange of, um, whether, whether we give them part of, give them High Street and the city takes the prop- the property all the way over to the library. Um, I see having, trying to, on that, if you're just having that little bit of High Street, trying to utilize the boat launch with, with parking, with, um, pulling vehicles in, turn, with hauling the trailer, turning them around, backing them, you know, backing them in, where you pull out, and then, you know, where are you going to park? A, you know, a trailer and a, um, vehicle that's connected. Um, and that's where I think the city could then develop that land to be able to accommodate those types of, of things. Um, I just, and that's just where I'm coming from.
The parcel two property on the other side of the south side of High Street?
So what I, you know, and one time somebody said, oh, that, you know, where the, where the purple or dark blue is, that that could be a, um, a splash pad or whatever. Well, I don't think a splash pad in that location right next, if I was buying a condo right next to them, kids and water, I mean, you're going to have screaming, hollering, and everything. So I don't, this is personally, I don't think that's a place for a splash pad. I'm talking about this property from here is, is, so then to accommodate, to help them out is basically looking at the vacating the High Street, creating some kind of, um, driveway slash that gets you down into the, to the boat launch and then be able to park boat trailers and boats and, um, and that's just where I'm, where, where my thought is. And I know it's, it's all in negotiations from one to another. And, and it then, it then resolves the, the issue that we have of the electric that is, um, under down there. So, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from, and having discussions with other community members. Right.
Oh yes, that's fair. Thank you.
Can I scroll out a little bit?
Yeah, please.
All right.
There you go.
So.
Go back to you, Paula.
So High Street?
That's good right there. So you're talking about that 282.3, right? There is a south of what's supposed to be High Street? That option?
I'm, I'm talking about everything, every, yeah, I mean, everything's south of, of, of High Street. Over to the library, I mean, I, I know that the, the, it's not owned by, it's owned by this group, it's not owned by the city. The city's been mowing that and maintaining that for, for years.
So it's already owned by the people who want to purchase the parcel, not above?
The area.
Correct, they own, they own the par- they own a parcel where the school and the, uh, and the bus garage was.
Okay.
And then you have the vacated street.
Okay.
And then that little part, that parcel to the south, they own that.
282.
Correct, yeah, but 238 High Street, they own that.
Okay.
And those were both, those were school properties, then the schools sold them.
Okay. And you're saying?
And High Street was, uh, just, High Street was, High Street was platted, but High Street has never, there's never been a street there.
Correct. Correct.
And you're saying, if they're giving us a piece that they own, would you prefer that they give us the piece that's south of that, so it makes it a little more practical?
I think it's better, I think it's advantageous to the city to figure out how you're going to, you know, utilize the boat launch. I mean, so for instance, right now, where you see that trailer, I, I believe it's a pickup truck in that trailer, that is actually parked on their property. So their prop- the city's property is between those two, where if you took High Street and took it all the way over to the river, um, between those two red or orange lines.
That belongs to the city.
That belongs to the city, but everything, so half of that, all that so-called parking on the south side of that area is, um, is, the city doesn't own that.
I think that's right.
And so what, and what they're proposing is, so if you take that little, where you see the, right where the 260 in the circle is on that building, um, if you take, and then the, the other part is the old gymnasium and, and, and building, if you take that little bit of land right there that's, shows this part, tart, and it looks like there's a car and trailer parked there, that's the, the property that they're proposing, um, in a trade.
Well, is that an option?
It is what an option.
What, the asphalt, the space south of there, or by 238 High Street, can you talk about? Instead of the parcel above? Or is this not time to talk about that enough?
I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm throwing those things out.
Of course, uh, we're, we're not opposed to being part of a much larger conversation down the road about solving called past sins, current sins that are going on there. He's correct that, uh, the public and the city uses that property 003 as if it is, uh, public property, but it's not.
Correct.
So we're, we're not opposed to conversations about that down the road. But I think what we're asking is extremely reasonable, uh, and where the car and the trailer shown, it's broken asphalt and weeds right now. And what we would do is, we would, uh, landscape that, make that nicer, so.
So you're saying now?
The city would win if you see where there's a circle down there, and then there's kind of half, half circle that spins off and ends, uh, in the asphalt. We'd work to continue that landscaping and make that nice. Right now, there's a, a park bench right on the edge of the asphalt, and we can really make that a beautiful area. And I think it's a very reasonable request, and we're giving far more property than what we would be giving. So I think, I think the request speaks for itself and is more than generous.
So it's, you know, interested in discussing that question?
No, not at all. I mean, it's a, it's a fu- it's a far bigger discussion. I mean, we're talking about 1,800 feet that we're asking for the seven feet. And now you're talking about, uh, different parcel, one that's not contiguous to the park, so we've got an issue there, but, uh.
I don't think we're not doing a large proportion of that.
I think it is prob- it is probably a large proportion.
Be significantly larger. Be significantly larger to fix a problem that, uh, the gentleman's talking about.
So you're not saying the same, you're not saying Perry, the same size, which is opposite side?
Well, there's, so there's, so I'm, there's different values. I mean, you, so if you're looking at that seven feet, certainly the square footage, you're not giving up, giving it up a lot. But you certainly are, there certainly is, it certainly is very advantageous to that development, um, that you, you're giving up seven feet that has, um, that allows them to put in, uh, a larger terrace or patio and everything. But at the same time, you're also, it's, they're getting a nice view of the river, that park almost becomes, it, it's certainly not their responsibility, but it, it becomes, you know, it becomes, it be, it almost becomes, uh, a yard for that, that group. Um, the other is, so, you know, I'm just looking at different things in different parts of the country, you know, where read something recently where somebody did something to their property, um, and now they're getting sued by, uh, adjoining property, different things. So you have that beautiful view of the river, um, what if the parks five years from now says, oh, we want to put, we want to erect something right in front of that, in that area that we own, and it blocks the view of those condominiums? And, you know, what's, you know, does that, you know? So I'm saying, I guess in my mind, that seven feet is certainly very, very valuable as compared to just, you know, trading this piece of property for that. That, that, to me, to the city, it has to be advantageous to both parties, and I don't see it being advantageous to both parties, meaning the developer and the city. I s- I personally see it only as advant- that seven feet being advantageous for the developer and so-so for the city. That's just, that's my view.
You know, it's about anything tonight, then later on, it might be harder to get. The part that I'm.
People I've talked to. The residents I've talked to think it'd be great to expand that landscaping there, clean up the asphalt, turn that into landscaping, and believe that is a very, very nice request. What it feels like is, sensing that we're over the barrel needing that seven feet, and so let's work it for all it's worth. I hope this gets viewed in the context of this is a more than reasonable request to help a project go forwards on a blighted property that's been sitting there for 15 years. That's the perspective, I hope this is viewed.
And, and mine is, I'm only on the parks, that decision ends up with the commission. I'm just giving my, my views, that, um, I, I have certainly no, um, uh, vote in the matter at all. I'm just, as, as being on the parks, I'm just giving my, what my opinion is of that.
My concern is that we're a steward of the public and everybody who uses that space.
I agree. And I will say, just for the record that.
That you really was trying to represent the way it's being used now and our future plans for that space as well as Riverwalk Park. And so we need to make sure that we are considering the trucks and the trailers and the boats that do these things. It's not really, it's nothing personal against you guys, we're just trying to make sure that we're decent stewards of the public and the interests of the long term.
I, I appreciate that, two, two thoughts. One, I want to be on the record that, uh, when we started conversations, uh, with Mike on this project a year ago, we said, and also down the road, we'd like to chat about, uh, the 003 parcel that, uh, the public uses. And we're the ones that threw on the table, hey, see if we can figure something out here that's possible for the city regarding that piece. So that's where our mindset is in our heart, uh, and we threw that out early on. That's not the conversation tonight, but, uh, that's where we're at. With respects to utilization on the boat ramp, uh, that's a different conversation for vacating High Street. But we also had the same perspective in heart, uh, the conversation with Mike and the city has been, if that happens, we will work with the city to create the proper, uh, drive turnaround area in design to make sure that that is still a very friendly place to use.
Okay.
And with the, with the vacation, look at all the asphalt that's there. On the vacation, all that, there will be significantly less asphalt and far more landscaping. So we have the opportunity to beautify that entire property, including the boat ru- boat launch and, uh, the 003 property.
I think that sounds wonderful, as long as we get maybe a little bit of that from my, uh, nice fashion, or you have it right now?
Well, there would be, there would, I mean, council would, would probably want that part of the thing, so.
Yeah, awesome.
So, and, and again, my thoughts, my proposal would be, so when you're talking about the amount of property, um, again, if you took that, um, property, the majority of, you'd still have to have some little swing in that would, that would allow to get into the boat launch and everything. But the majority of that property from all the way down to High Street, um, to this side, the High Street, that being part of the trade, um, now we're not, we're, to me, we're not talking about a big discrepancy of square footage. I mean, if you took, if, again, I don't know if that's what the city wants to do or not. But if you took, so if you took, instead of trading that, that section behind the building, you took, they got the seven feet and they got majority of all that pro- property that goes down to the property line of the, um, High Street.
Are you talking about the big, the, the street plat? Is that where you're talking?
Yeah. I mean, that's, I mean, I, not doing, sitting there doing the math, but just looking at it, that's, to me, is a considerable amount of property. That then, I'm just thinking outside the box, that then, um, would help them with park, would help the, the, because my understand, uh, my understanding is, the runtsman, or excuse me, the gymnasium area and everything is going to be created as retail space, correct?
Correct.
So then you're going to need parking, I don't know where you, where you're going to put that, but again, that's an area that you would be able to create for parking for that retail space.
Our parking would be in the front and on the north side.
High Street. I, Todd, High Street, as of right now, you weren't even remotely close to talking about crap.
Correct.
So what you're just asking for tonight and looking for is the seven foot long property line in exchange for that blue section. Later date, come back and have discussions on. Later date, come back and have discussions on High Street and the rest of it.
Correct, very well stated. With that property that we would trade to the city, we also would commit to landscaping to make that look beautiful, continuation of the parks that are there. With respects of High Street, I mean, picture's worth a thousand words, right? Right now, we're looking at nothing but cracked asphalt. Our intent would be if it's vacated, typically, both property owners get half of the vacated road. We happen to be property owners on both sides. But our intent is not to make a request for vacation because we need more parking and so that we can landscape it and make it look nice. That would be the plan down the road. I think if you ask anybody out walking around the street, it's what we're proposing. You know, if there's a vacation to landscape and make it look nice. Is that possible, thanks for the law? I think nine out of ten people would say absolutely. It's what we're proposing with the seven feet in exchange for almost twice the amount of area, which we'll agree to landscape. Is that a positive, thanks for the law? I think absolutely. It widens the park, makes the park bigger, and that's more landscaping.
Do you got a timeline when, I understand the construction ended and we'll hope what's going on. But are you, that parcel two, is that something that's going to evolve in the next year, year and a half, two years?
I'd like to see what we're talking about now, the condos there and that type of thing go forwards nicely. And truthfully, we don't have a plan drawn up for parcel two. And we're not focusing on parcel two right now. We want to do the other part, do it very nicely, do it very well, and then come back at a later date. I think the road vacation is a conversation down the road. I think the road vacation would be very positive for the law. And, you know, we're residents of the law. The way we've talked about this project, we've said we want to put our best foot forwards and make it look really nice and have our name on it. We'd feel good about that. It's not a bravado thing. It's, we'd feel good about addressing this blighted property.
Right. And, Harry, I agree with you. Maybe there is something we can do with the parcel two eventually. In Todd's defense, I know he's not prepared to, to do anything on that caliber. They may go back and have conversations and then it's something that possibly could happen one or another, but. I think the answer tonight is going to be almost impossible.
So are you looking to make a decision tonight of trading that property?
Well, no. I mean, there's a number of steps that have to happen. There's, we have, we, there would have to be, there would have to be, it would have to be removed from the park plan. That's the first thing that has to happen before they can even. And council, well, the park board is a recommending body. They can recommend to do it, they can recommend not to. That being said, it would still go to the council, and the council can make any decision they see fit. And in addition, with the, there's also the DNR trust fund issue. The council, while the park board can recommend, they can make, they can take, they can make a recommendation to the council, the council can accept the recommendation or make modifications any way they see fit.
Would you remind us of what the DNR trust fund issue is?
The DNR trust fund issue is that seven feet, there has to be a land conversion. Meaning, in order for us to vacate that seven feet, we have to get conversion property. That's that small blue parcel that we talked about.
Is it because it was purchased with DNR funds?
Correct.
We took a grant for the.
Yeah.
For the amphitheater.
Right. And any park property that, any park property that receives a DNR trust fund grant must remain park property perpetually. However, development issues come up all the time with adjacent property where DNR has this method in place that has to be followed, that they will consider conversion. But the conversion that you're receiving has to be more than you're giving, has to be equal to or more than what you're giving them.
And connected to an existing property.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
It has to be new property the city doesn't own that can be, that can be turned over to park property.
So in reality, we wouldn't really be able to do the chunk, we said, shut it off?
Don't, yeah, that issue is a separate issue down the road.
Even if we wanted to?
Right.
Let's, I, I mean, I, I just, I, I don't see the, I don't see it, trading that piece, that property, and I don't see it's being hugely advantageous to the city.
What's, what's the parks plan for that seven feet right now? What's it say in your master plan about, just about that seven feet?
It's just, it's part of the park. I don't know if there's any developing it or anything. I don't, I'd have to look at the new park plan that was just.
Well, I think getting that property to not look like a twenty-year-old abandoned school is positive for the city. So I don't understand how it's not. We're taking land we're not doing anything with right now and trading it for land we're not doing anything with right now. We're getting almost double the square footage, and we're getting rid of the, probably the biggest blighted property in the city.
Which is true.
I don't know how that's not advantageous for the city.
Well, we also gain quite a bit of your tax revenue dollars more as well, too. So there, it's a win-win for the city as far as tax dollars, getting that part of it as they develop it.
But let's be clear, this is in charity, they're going to make a ton of money on that. This isn't likely doing all the goodness in the park. They're going to make bank, they're going to make a ton of money on that, which is fine. I'm just saying, it'll be a win-win for both of us, which is good. But let's not act like they're just doing it out of the goodness of heart because they want to.
I would never act like that. But to say it's not advantageous for the city is incorrect.
Okay, that's true.
Unused property for unused property.
Yeah, and to even try to do something over in that parcel two right now, I don't think the DNR would go for that.
That's not part of this discussion.
It's not adjoining to another park.
So you're either going to be one or the other.
So we can consider, it then has nothing to do.
That's a separate issue. That's, regardless of the issues in front of you right now, those are separate.
What is the exact issue? The exact issue is, do we want to switch what was offered or.
Yeah, the yellow or the blue.
The seven feet and the transfer. The other issues can be dealt, now, when, when those issues, when the vacation comes about, there's going to be, there's going to be impact on the park. Say the park doesn't, shouldn't have input on it. I, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that. They should. But that's a separate issue. In order to facilitate the first phase of the development at this time, that's a separate issue. The seven feet by the, the two hundred sixty-three by seven feet by the sixty-seven by forty-seven, that's really what the, that's what the issue is at this point.
Okay, so here's my, so that, that property that they're offering to swap, am I hearing that they're going to develop it? Or am I, or is the city going to develop it? Is the city going to tear out the ash, ash, asphalt and put grass and make it park-like, et cetera? And so that's, because I, I kind of heard, I thought I heard from you that you were talking about.
We would do it.
Yeah.
You know, that cost and everything.
Correct. My understanding is they would do it.
Okay, so is there, is there a, is there a lightness or what, a diagram of what that would look like? Or is it just tearing it out and it's just grass and that's it? And I mean, I guess when I'm trading that, I, you know, you're, you're talking about that, but at the same time, if it goes into the parks and then the parks doesn't, I mean, we don't have money enough to do the, what we want in all of our parks. So now if we have to develop that, or is it, is it, is it just going to be just grass? Or is there going to be mounds? I guess I'd like to see some, some site plan of what it would look like after the, in trading that.
I can make this simple one. Our proposal says it, and I'm saying it publicly, we'll landscape that at our cost. That's what our paperwork says in our bid. And I will also say that a landscape plan submitted to, to staff acceptable to staff. So that staff says, you got a dozen rose bushes in there and this, that, and the other thing, we want fifteen rose bushes, fine, it's staff's call. I, I have no intention of this.
I don't know, I, I just.
What the rest of the stuff is they're giving.
I don't have a vision, I don't, current, I'm, I don't have a vision of what it would look like. I guess I would like to have a vision of what that would look like.
City input on that, right?
Correct. Absolutely. I want it to be pretty, and my mind's not cleared up, it should be some pretty plannings there, and it could be subject to staff's.
I'm just saying that before I, my, before you would trade that, I would, I would hope that the city would get some kind of rendering of what it would look like.
I just gave you a blank check.
I think a commitment to the.
That's pretty good.
I think a commitment to the development of the property is.
Yeah, but, Harry, I think he did.
He absolutely did.
A blank check? Publicly, he just.
He just said they will make.
So if, so if, if park says we want.
And reason, a path through it, then.
What I envision, and tell me if I'm wrong, Todd, is the extension of this area right here. Finish filling all this in, this either becomes, in the park's mind, this is either going to become grass area, or it's going to go concrete, or it's going to go asphalt. But Todd's proposing, in my opinion, is landscaping all of this big section to give us back green space with trees, a park.
With city and park input, correct? That's what he said.
Let's, let's make it pretty. You know, higher up where that complete circle is, there's some nice linings in there. There's some different stuff around there. Let's, let's do it similar.
Uniform, maybe, I think.
Let's make it nice, and it's your call, how you want to do that.
If you're going to talk about.
How can I keep, how can I keep my mouth shut? I'm Mr. Ankerich. I own, if you scroll up a little bit, my wife and I live at three twenty-nine North Monroe, and we've had a business in town for sixteen years, for those who don't know me. I also use the kayak. I'm, I'm rich all the time to leave the kayak thing longer. I, I think, number one, that area of all of the park gets used a lot. And I think increasing the green space there, in my mind, I think another bench or two would be nice, not just all plants, because that area has the boat launch, and it also has the kayak launch. And it also has the little dock that goes out the furthest. That gets of, of the whole, I walk up and down the river, walk to work every day. I spend a lot of time all this summer. If there's any concentration, it happens there. So I, I think you guys are getting a good deal. Because the, the seven feet is going to make the whole thing look nicer. And I just, I also would hate to see anything impeding the progress because that whole eyesore over there has been something that's been bugging me for the last, how long has it been empty? Seven years?
Almost sixteen, right?
Well, I mean, for a while, they were using it as the unity building, weren't they?
Yes.
Yeah. In the early two thousands.
But I, I think, I think it'd look really good, and I think it would get used, believe it or not. I don't think he's just, just putting grass there for nothing. I think people would, would utilize it because it's by the boat and the kayak launch. And I won't repeat myself.
I know. My only question is, so it is wonderful, they're going to landscape it. If at some point we do decide we want to do some house, do we need to take into account the cost of doing the landscaping? You know what I mean? I just want to know, like, in the future, so it would be considered city property, park property? And if we, when we have the discretion to do with it, what we choose, would you choose to do something with it?
You're saying if the master plan changes, are you going to have to reimburse them for what he did to it?
Yes. Because sometimes it's, we put the money in, so now we kind of, we don't own it, but we kind of own it. So I just want to make sure that was clear as well. Because do we want them to go landscaping if that is sort of a conditional thing? They do the landscaping, and they decide we're using this? I just wanted to make sure and clarify that.
It's not a conditional thing, and the DNR requirement is that title's transferred to the simple, which means the city owns.
Right, we own it.
Discretion of.
We will own it.
Okay.
If they would not have, yeah, that's part of, there has to be new, like I said, there, there has to be new land in city homes.
I still, and this is just, I still would like to see some kind of, what it would look like. Meaning like, like, like maybe, and I'm just thinking of different things. Like maybe Cliff made a good point. Maybe, maybe there should be like a gazebo there, you know, for, you know, so you're out of the sun, different things. I just.
But he's offering you the input on that. He want it right now and that's not going to happen. It's not feasible for him to draw you a plan of what it's going to look like right now.
No, but I'm saying, I'm not saying right this, I'm not saying tonight. I'm saying in the next, I asked you if you're making that decision tonight.
No, no decision.
So it's, so it's not.
So could he, could he have something in the next thirty days?
Yes. I mean, I'm just saying, so that you have, because I, I, you know, when somebody says, oh, I'm giving you a blank check, well, I mean, I, a reasonable, reasonable person, I want to know, okay, can, can this blank check be a gazebo, a parrot? You know, some trees, some park, you know, different things in that area?
I think it can become a lot of things within a reasonable amount of money spent. I mean, we can't ask them to spend a million dollars.
I understand that, but, but the gentleman just said, I'm writing you a blank check.
You know what I'm thinking? I'm thinking that we may not be able to visualize how we want to use it until the construction is done. And then we may want to decide if that. Because I won't be able to know right now what I think is the best choice. It's going to be.
Because it's a deeper build, yeah.
I see your point. As long as they say.
So how do you move forward with that, with needing to see it?
As long as they say they'll let us set up at the point where they're ready to be doing it. I see, which I assume is after the construction is finished.
I think what he'd like here tonight is that, that we're willing to, to make this swap so that he can go back to his partner and says, okay, let's look at ninety-nine percent, a hundred percent that they're going to do it. Now let's go ahead and start the development phase so I can bring it back to you and show you what this has the potential of looking like.
Yeah.
He's a businessman. I personally wouldn't invest a lot of money until I got some positive feedback that this is the way we're going. And now I can spend some money and make it happen.
Let's all, let's all look to the council.
Right, agreed. So what do you want from us exactly? Do we need to say something specifically to let you know?
I think what will eventually happen is what we will do, I've talked to the city attorney about it on both of the projects. The first one is, we would bring you a modified copy of the park plan, taking out the seven feet and accepting the converted property as park plan. That would be the first thing. Then you would make a recommendation to the city council if you would do that.
Now that, and I just was looking at the previous thing. So that seven feet is going not just in front of the building, but going all the way north to the, to the, north to the lateline?
Correct. The two hundred sixty-three feet, Suzie, can you, can you scroll up?
Like it's straight to thirty feet.
It goes basically from the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's straight to thirty feet.
Basically from the sidewalk, where the, basically where that lower circle starts just a little, goes all the way to the park, all the way to, all the way to King. Goes from King, all the way down to just before that sidewalk.
So if they were to decide to build another, some more condos to the north, they already own the seven feet, they don't have to come back and ask you yet? Yep, is that kind of your intent?
Yes.
That makes absolutely complete sense, but.
Or even if they're doing the north park, and they're going to need to second drive it, and you're going to pull everybody along.
We would at some point, I, I believe this has to happen at council level. There would have to be a public hearing on vacating or on, on the, on the land swap for the DNR. I could get the specifics from the DNR on that, but they sent me a letter last week on it. So that would have, that would happen at council. But we would, you know, we would, we would want a recommendation from, from the park board with that you can do what you, what you, what you wish. And could, you wish to make the modification or not, to, to.